Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
Present.
Chris Hultunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Absent, excused.
Tom Cozel.
Absent, excused.
Robert Musling, here. Robert Jacobs.
Here.
Kathy Schweiger.
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval slash amendments to the agenda. Any comments?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard, absent. Or, no, Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sorry. Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb is absent. Tom Cozel. Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweiger.
Yes. Item number five is approval of minutes for July 27, 2022. Comments? Motion? Motion to approve. Any second?
A second.
W. Addy. And roll call when you get a chance.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb is absent. Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweiger.
Yes. Item number six is a public hearing. For the public hearing, I will read the comments and rules for it. Number one is all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, items wish, excuse me, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public, six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group. Number three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign at the sign and chief provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. Six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. We have item six A, which is the On the Rocks SLU review. I will open the public hearing at 7:08 and would ask our planner, which is Karen, if you want to come forward and make any comments about this item.
We received the special land use application. As your consultant, we are not making any recommendation. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward and say anything or state your name for the record, please?
Kim Graff. Good evening. I opened up On the Rocks three years ago. Feel like I'm losing a little bit of business because I don't, can't keep the tiki bar open as late as some of the other restaurants in the area. So all I'm asking for is two hours to extend the hours and an outside music because just trying to compete with everybody else in the area.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Any members of the audience wishing to make any comments, you can come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address. Why don't you come up to the podium, please?
My name's Don Stewart. I live at 7900. Our living room faces On the Rocks. So we're right across the canal. And for like two years, it's been hell. We've called the police on it how many times. They don't seem to find the noise ordinance. They can't find it on their computer when we call. We have had our, we have a glass table in our house and we've had the glasses vibrate across our table. We've asked them to turn it down a few times. They turn it up. I've even turned our music on and like two idiots, we were out there having battles back and forth with the music. I'm not against the bars and all that, but that tiki bar is ridiculous. It's right in the middle of the subdivision. There's 50 feet on houses on each side. You think you guys could have got a better, better place. It just, we close our windows and alls we hear is that bar five nights a week. We hear F-bombs all the time. The later it gets, the more drunk they get, the louder it gets. We have to close our blinds because the headlights shine in our house in the living room all night. The outside parking lights light up our house. You guys need, you know, it's not fair. We live there too. So why do you let this persist like this? I've gone to the building department. They don't care. The police don't seem to care. So, I mean, it's just ridiculous. So I don't know if you guys can be, could do anything about it or this is just all bullshit and you're not going to do anything.
We're here to hear your comments. We did this three, we're here to hear everybody's comments. We did this three years ago and I don't know how many of us were here three years ago, but I don't believe we permitted, excuse me, let me finish, that we allowed outside entertainment. You had an outside tiki bar, but...
Well, there's music going on. They have, you know, and it's not their fault. At night, when they're supposed to be open to eight o'clock, which we can never find that ordinance, the building department, we never seem to find out when that is. But a lot of people stay late. They're in their boats. They have little parties going on. They're drinking. They're having fun. They, you know, they hit everything. You know, on the seawall, they're, you know, they're peeing in the seawall after everyone's, you know, are off the boats, back of their boats. It's like, come on, you know, this subdivision. You know, there's kids around. There's people around and you gotta be put, you gotta put up with this. It used to be a nice bar when we worked, when we moved there. We've been there about 30 years. They opened that up a couple of years ago. When it was inside, it's fine, you know. It's not exposed, you know, and all the craziness, but ever since that tiki bar went in. You know, and I bet we've got 20 calls into the police if you want to check the record from complaining about that place. You know, when Nelson built it, I think he had that tiki bar built, the previous owner, before they even had a permit. He had the tiki bar built and then he passed away, then they picked it up. But when they built it, we never got notice that they were going to have outside entertainment. You know, now all of a sudden, you give us notice that they want to extend it to more hours. Well, we never even got a notice that they were going to put the bar out there. But, I mean, we have rights too. I mean, they've got a noise ordinance. We shouldn't have to have that come through our house every night. It's just, it's ridiculous. You know, it's devaluing our house, you know, and everything else. So it's just, it's not fair.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Yeah, there's a lot more, but I don't have enough time for all the stuff that's happened over there.
I think we get the general idea where...
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Please come forward and state your name.
I'm his wife Cheryl Stewart, 7900 Inglewood also. Even during the daytime, when these many people are talking, if you can imagine your neighbors having people over every day, five days a week, and you can hear conversations constantly. You know, and I look at the clock and I think, oh, I've got four more hours to go till it's eight, but they never get out all the way. It's always, you know, past eight by the time everybody leaves. I wanted to say that there was another person who lived next to us, last house on the water. They called the policeman one night and they were complaining. They were new to the neighborhood. They were all excited a bar was coming, you know. They found out a bar was coming and that was great. Turned out to be their worst nightmare. They told the police that, and this is hearsay, I know, but they asked us to come over there. They told the policeman that it was their dream home. That's where they were going to retire. The woman was retired. Her husband was still working and they moved. They said they were going to probably move from the dream home because they couldn't stand it. There were boats practically hitting his boat all the time. They witnessed dogs being forced to mate in the parking lot and there were just stuff going on that they didn't like. And yes, we are, the house is taking the brunt of it, but I sit in my house and listen to constant conversations throughout the day. It's just kind of irritating, you know. Don't want to have peace and quiet. You've got this in the background and yesterday was really interesting because I like to go to sleep by the sound of the water. You know, it's soothing. It's really nice. And sometimes we hear it during the day and yesterday it rained and the people, I don't know if they left, went inside, what happened, but I was sitting in the living room and all of a sudden I heard the waves. Because the windows start blowing, you know. It's been breezy lately. The window is blowing. I heard the waves and I went, wow, I haven't heard those in so long. Because the conversations of the bar are always, you know. They, I can hear that more than I can, you know, nature, but I think part of the reason is there's a sound problem out there because of the location on the lake, how the sound travels. Because I think it was last weekend, there was a band we heard a mile away. That's their problem, whatever township that is, but we could hear it a mile away. Everybody on the street could. But I just would like some peace and quiet and to extend these hours. It's just going to be a disaster for, you know. And I realize that some people on the street don't care. Some of them, some of them are empty lots on the street. Some people, there's one house, nobody's lived there for five years. And I realize there's people that, there's other people that hear it and just don't care. But last time they had a band, we had to go out in the garage to escape the noise. That's how bad it was. And I don't want to spend all my time in the garage. I just don't. And I don't know if you have any control over this person that's here tonight. Their lights stay on till 11 o'clock. I think they're timed and they do shine in the bedroom window. And I want the curtains apart way open, get some air, get some fresh air in. And last night I woke up and the lights were on till about one or two. I woke up in the living room and my house was lit up. I had to go outside and make sure there wasn't a full moon, you know, and they didn't go off until one or two o'clock. I don't know if those are timed. And it's just real frustrating, real frustrating. And we were never informed that there was going to be outdoor entertaining, which we're not real happy with. And to extend it, you know, it's just a bad, it's going to be a bad situation made worse. Also, I'd like to say if they extend this, it's probably going to be precedent for other bars. They're going to want to have outdoor entertaining. I don't know. But that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other member of the audience like to come forward and?
Susan Magnus. I'm sorry, my voice is going.
Did you catch your name?
Susan Magnus.
Can you spell it, please?
S-U-Z-A-N. 7495 Zobel Court. Anyways, I've lived in my house for 34 years. My mother's house is two doors down and she's closer to the bar than I am. And I haven't seen all these things that you see. I work in an outside bar and we have outside entertainment. I haven't seen a band outside over there. So I'm, when I bought the house, it was the Piers Marina and there was a restaurant. So I knew it when I bought the house. So I'm not, you know, it's, everyone's struggling, especially restaurants. So I don't understand how Cabana can do what they've done in a nature area and they can't have a tiki bar outside. And like I said, I'm right there. I'm right there. And I think everybody should try to support these restaurants that have struggled so hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say something, Karen?
Oh, wait, no. We're going to go through, anybody else who wants to first, okay? Anybody else in the audience who would like to come forward and make a comment? I'll give you one minute to come forward and after that we'll...
Yeah, I don't know how she could say this. Sorry. I don't know how she could say, I mean, they get a tent and put it out there. That's where the bar hangs out in the tent, which is fine. And they supposedly get a permit, which I hope she say there's no bar or no band because they get a permit for it. And it's just loud, that's all.
Okay.
It goes right through our house. And the cabana is like 300 feet away from everybody. You know, the houses, this is 50 feet, you know. It's a little close. They need a different location for that thing.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience like to come forward and make a comment? I mean, one more time, anybody else? All right, go ahead, Mr. Mc...
The only thing I have to say is that was a, that was a restaurant bar way before he moved into the house and way before his house was there. He actually bought the house from the owner of my restaurant. So if you bought it from it, you didn't know, you didn't know, you didn't...
No, hold on. No, let him...
If you, if you didn't know it was a restaurant when you bought it?
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
All right, thank you. No, we're done. Sorry. All right, I already...
I lived there 30 years. We just didn't buy that house. Our house burned down, the street, old, next couple of doors down, and we've been in that house for 15 years.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience? Nope, we're all done. I'll close the public hearing at 7:22. Any question? Mr. Moma, please. Sir, go ahead.
Can I ask just a couple of questions?
Sir, go right ahead.
Just for clarification, because there's some mixed, I guess there's some mixed information here. Some people are saying that there's outdoor entertainment currently and others are saying there is not. So from my understanding, I believe there's probably outdoor events that were petitioned outside of normal operations. Correct? And I'm going to assume that was probably the St. Patty's Day events?
St. Patty's Day event.
So those are events that you, that you get a special event application? So you're not currently housing entertainment outdoors? Okay, I just wanted to make that clear because that was one of your requests was to start outdoor entertainment, not extend hours of outdoor entertainment. Okay, so there is no current outdoor entertainment except for special events. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Nope, that's, that's correct. Any other comments or questions for rebuttals?
When this came up originally, didn't we request that the information, exactly what we passed for Cabana Blue? Wasn't that requested?
I talked to Cindy and I see that, I don't know if Gary can help us send this or not.
I don't remember and I think...
I didn't see that.
I asked Cindy about what we did for Cabana Blue. We did not allow outside entertainment, but what Cabana Blue has is big garage doors that come up. So their entertainment's inside, which drifts out to the outside. That was the same thing back when we dealt with this location on On the Rocks. They wanted outside entertainment because at that time, three years ago, I think it was, don't quote me on that number of years. The neighbors, it was, this place was packed. The neighbors were not happy about it. So we left it with no outside entertainment. They could have the entertainment inside and they could use their speakers within, you know, reason for the sound ordinance, the decibels. So at that point, we never did approve anything for outside entertainment. If they get a special permit for an event, that is a difference. So that's, Gary, if you know something different, please help us out here.
Yeah, no, I don't know anything different.
Okay. Because I did check with Cindy on that. Is there another establishment doing in that area too? There's Cabana Blue.
Island Grill.
Oh, that was the other one. I'm sorry. But is there another one with entertainment that?
They have entertainment. Zeps has entertainment.
It's outside entertainment.
Well, it's the door. They can go up to the, up to the doors like...
Same as Cabana Blue.
Yeah, the door's open, rolls up.
Like the Cabana Blue concept? Okay.
Island Grill's outside.
Yeah, it goes outside. Okay. So as far as in our township, those are the two, you know, items that I know of from that point of view. And this application appears to be requesting an expansion to have on a daily basis.
But it'd probably be weekends. I'm not going to have it during the week.
And you stated that at the last public hearing, this place was packed.
I remember. Who, anybody else?
I was there, but I can't remember what that was.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just, you know, because those same people, I believe, got the notice because we did get a copy of everybody that was notified.
Listened on this.
And we don't have a room full of people again.
It was packed for Blue Horizon, so sure it was packed for this.
For Blue Horseshoes or whatever it was called.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Blue Horseshoes. There was a lot of people here for, at that time, On the Rocks because we went back and forth about lighting. We went back and forth about outside entertainment, the neighbors. Because it's only, is it a 50-foot wide canal? Because of the way sound carries just in general, it seems over the water. We were trying to be respectful at that time of how to balance, which I think we always try
Sure.
to do. But we are three years later and obviously we have a list of the people who are notified and the people who are here.
I have a question for the applicant. Do you currently have speakers outside on the deck?
There's one that, on the building for background music, you know what I mean?
You know what the decibels are for that?
We've had a test and I, I've got a thing. It's nothing, nothing, absolutely nothing.
It's in specs or whatever.
It's way under any specs that you guys had because I told what Cabana Blue had and we weren't even close.
And if you were to add additional speakers, low volume, on the deck itself?
Well, we're not, we're not really allowed, it's not, I like to call it a restaurant that has alcohol, right? It's not a bar. That's stupid. That's how can we close at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock? I mean, I can stay open till 2 o'clock in the morning, but that's not what I want. I want, come in, have some dinner, have a few drinks, have some music. There's, yeah, there's times that we want music. We want people in there. It brings people in. As you know, when you do your music in the park, people come to the music. So that's where I'm at with it and it just, you know, it would, you know, and then people come out the water at 7:05, 7:30 and they can't get, break at the tiki bar because it goes at 8 o'clock. So kind of defer them. They go over to Island Grill. They go to...
I think that restaurant that you're currently in probably has had six operations prior, when it was, since it was built, since it was a Piers.
Oh, yeah.
That point in time and there were numerous, numerous restaurants in there with entertainment and noise. So I don't think that a current complaint, if you didn't complain before, if there's a difference in it, so...
You're talking about me not complaining before?
I'm talking about you complaining 30 years ago.
Oh, 30 years ago. No, not 30 years ago.
That's when the restaurants were, that's when the restaurants were in...
All right, all right, stop, stop.
This only happened the last two years.
Sir.
No, I get my chance to talk.
You had your chance to talk.
You did have your chance to talk, sir, please.
I can talk a lot more.
I know you could and I read the rules before we started, so I appreciate your comments.
You don't, you don't seem to care about us, so why should we care about your rules?
We do care. I know we might not be...
You don't care.
Okay, sir, I'm not going to engage in this. Gary, can I ask you a question?
If you cared, you guys would do something about it.
Sir, please.
You know, he tells, then he tells you, we bought the house from him. That's bullshit.
We already heard your comments, sir. Enough. Thank you.
Fifteen years, then...
I understand. We heard you very... Sir, sir, please, we'll take a break if we need to, but please. Gary, do you have any information about any complaints being made at all or is that nothing that comes to your department?
Yeah, that wouldn't be anything that came to our department.
Okay.
That'll be handled through PD primarily, I would suspect.
And it doesn't come back, filter through at all?
Hear anything from my desk.
Okay.
We've been to the police, we've been to the office.
I'm not doubting what you're, sir, listen, I'm not doubting what you're saying. You need to stop talking or I'm going to take a break and you're going to be asked to... Thank you. All right. Any more discussion, comments, thoughts, questions?
Prior to On the Rocks, was there an outside, like, tiki bar through those different?
Yes. There was one there. I believe they built the tiki bar 2016. They did pull a permit. It's in record. I have the paperwork for it. Actually, when I brought the paperwork in for this meeting, it's right on the, right on the drawings that I brought in. That they applied for then.
16 months prior to that was with these other restaurants?
That was Sunset. I think that was Sunset.
There's been a bunch of them, but was, memory serves as, there was other outside eating and whatnot, um,
Right.
Different owners.
Right. But that's how come when, when I, when I got in, they didn't have water out there. They didn't have electricity out there. I pulled all the permits to pull it. We brought it in. We got, did everything I was supposed to do. So that's what I'm saying.
So the site plan, obviously went through the planning and it was approved.
This, that was already on, that was in 2016 and I've only been there since, for three years now.
You're saying you're in compliance with noise?
Yeah, I mean, bring them out. Listen, they do nothing.
But there's nothing else.
But, and I understand them, like, they're right across the water, but that's, I gotta throw my building and walk away because I'm not going to have people that are not going to...
Okay, we're going to stop that. No more. Sir, please, no more.
We got just as much right as you do.
We understand that.
Okay.
We understand.
But you don't have control of the marina separate from your entity.
No, that's...
I'm sure some of the noise is from the marina, which is separate from you that are coming and going.
Sure. And yes, you know, when people come down, they come off the bay, they get their radios on. They go to the marina. They go to my place. You know, when they come into my place, I tell them, turn the radio off. Don't want no hassle with my name. Just turn the music off. We have music, you know, inside. That's all I can do. I can... So that's, that's where I'm at with it.
Often are you looking to do the music and?
We usually do Fridays and Saturdays, but, you know what I mean? And it's not every week. It's once a month, twice a month. We haven't had a band there also, except for our anniversary on July 2. We usually have, you know, we will do them in the winter time. We'll have them on a Friday night. We'll have them every other week or once a month just to bring people in because you're in the middle of nowhere. Bring people in. We, you know, we're not playing Help Their Skeleton. We're playing Mel and Brother. We're playing, you know, low, not loud bands. We don't, that's not me.
You're usually in a tent, are you not?
Yeah, usually for that.
And has sides?
In the summertime, we don't do the sides.
Restaurant, I don't remember. The open side is facing the restaurant.
Yes.
Gary, can I ask, has anybody been out to check the lighting as far as in the building? Not maybe headlights and stuff, but from cars?
He's talking about my, my parking lights, my parking lot lights, I'm sure. And if they were on at 2 o'clock in the morning, the only reason that is, is because we lost power and they are on a timer and I haven't had a chance to change. I didn't even think about checking the timer. They usually go off about 11 o'clock every night.
People, people can pull down your driveway anytime, night or day, and especially at night and in those flood...
They all come down at 11...
So you don't have a gate preventing people from coming in there? Okay.
Debbie, you have a question?
Yeah. Kip, I see here you want to increase two hours before noon to open. Are you going to be serving breakfast, that kind of stuff? It says, you want to open it from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.?
No, it was supposed to be, well, we're open at 11 a.m. We only open up at 11 a.m. till 10 p.m. You mean the tiki bar?
The whole operation.
Yeah, the whole operation. We open up at 11 o'clock Thursday through Sunday.
So if, if, for example, it comes to be 8:01 and nobody's there, are you going to stay open till 10 or are you going to say, well?
The tiki bar?
Yeah.
There's no sense being out there. You're not making...
Right, so you're going to lose logic.
And now this is going to be pretty much mute because we have, what, another three weeks, maybe?
Yeah.
And mostly it's the four months or five months of summer.
Seasonal.
Seasonal.
Do you have any way to monitor the sound ordinance requirement when you do have a band come in? Is there anything?
Sure. Every phone got a sound thing on it. You can put the app on there. It'll tell you what your decibels are.
I guess I'm out of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, every, every phone, they've got levels on. They've got everything on. So, yeah, and we, and we did it and they not. So, yeah, and we, and we did it, and they're not, you know, we, I'm, I'm not trying to cause trouble with them, but I'm trying to, during my business, I'm trying to ha- have fun. I mean, you got a beautiful view, you got water out there, you got people that are moting, people that are having fun.
Have you considered having, or maybe you have, had a AV expert come in and decide what kind of typical music you can have in there that would satisfy the neighborhood as well as yourself? And develop some type of, maybe it's out there, I don't know, different speakers or whatever the case may be. Maybe worthwhile to have that done, have them do a, a review and a site plan for it and see what, see what you come up with.
So you have, is now you pull permits to do special occasions?
Yep.
Is there a limit on how many times he can pull those permits per year, Gary?
Pretty sure that those permits are handled through the clerk's office.
Okay, so.
They're actually handled through the Michigan Liquor Control and the Police Department.
Yep.
Because I have to fill out the form, send them a picture, and ask them to know what I do with the liquor.
And then, how, what, what's the cost to do the permits?
I think it's $350.
So I, if for some reason, like, for the outdoor entertainment, if that's not, there's still op, other revenues that.
Right.
Amis that you can go and accomplish that?
Like, usually, like I said, usually we have, I think, we do four parties, four or five special parties a year. You know, the Halloween, St. Patty's Day, our anniversary, maybe it's three, maybe, I think there's four that we do.
And you would be doing that in addition to?
Well, I still, I still have to pull that permit even if I get the extent, even if I get a site permit.
Okay.
Because I still have to talk to Liquor Control and they have to say yes.
So, a question on that Liquor Control permit, because I'm somewhat familiar with them. So you, do you have to get local law enforcement approval for that permit?
Yes.
So I guess my, my statement on that would be, if you had multiple complaints or many complaints against you, the local law enforcement probably would not give you the okay for that permit, because I know they're pretty stringent on those permits through the Liquor Control Commission, so.
Correct.
That was just, I'm just questioning, you know, again, if there are complaints, I would definitely want to know, you know.
I agree with that.
Know about that, but I do know that local law enforcement is pretty, pretty adamant about not granting special applications to people that are violating any application they've had.
Right.
When we say local law enforcement, are we talking Clay Township?
Yes.
Yep, we have to get through.
Yeah, I mean, and they, they come out, they come, you know, and I don't know when they're coming, but they come out, they drive through the parking lot, you know, they'll park down at the marina and walk up to see how loud the music is, right? I mean, like I said, and there's been a couple of times where they said, "We're a little loud, turn it down." We turn it down, you mean?
May I have another question?
I'm not going to get into a big discussion with you because it's just not appropriate, you can, you can.
Does the permit override the noise ordinance?
I doubt it. I don't know the answer for sure, but I would say that's not quite likely.
Every time we've called the police and they've showed up, we've even been to the office, I've tried to make reports and sign a report and they won't take them. I've asked them for the noise ordinance and they say they can't find it on their phone, but yet, my stupid phone, I can find it.
Who is "they" that you're referring to?
Whatever officer shows up.
You're talking about the Police Department?
Yeah, Clay Township.
Okay, thank you.
He did, there was one that was that, trying to help, I forgot his name now, he was trying to help a little bit about a year ago. But they were a little quiet for the last year, they've been fine, but, you know, the, besides all that. I was just curious about the noise ordinance, and then whom enforces that, you know?
Robert, do you have any, yeah, Robert?
Hey, Tim, so this marina is separate than the restaurant, correct?
Yes.
And Don, right?
Yes.
Don, your issue was people going to the bathroom off the boating?
Those are the people coming to the restaurant, he has transient parking in front of the restaurant for the boats.
But that should have nothing to do with his restaurant though, correct, so?
They're there to go to the restaurant, those boats, they're there by boat to go to the restaurant.
So who's, who's in control of the, of the boats, of the marina?
I, either Kip or him, I have no idea. They're there to go to his restaurant. Now, he's probably not there when this goes on, a lot of this goes on after hours. You know, and then we've called Clay Township about the boats being out there. And the Clay Township says, "Oh, call the sheriff." Okay, so we called the sheriff, sheriff says, "Oh, we called Clay Township, we don't have any jurisdiction over the lake." But yet, I have a boat that we have an argument with Kip at the marina over on a piece of property. We've been arguing a couple of years. And Clay Township will show up to give me grief about this boat, but yet, they won't do anything about the boats that are at the marina. They put 40-foot boats, they have 21-foot docks, the canal's 50 feet wide, 55 feet wide. They will put 30-foot, 35, 38-foot boats protruding out into the canal, and no one cares, you know? And I really don't care about that because it's not bothering, that's not bothering me. It's just, that's the noise and all the other stuff going on all the time.
Okay, appreciate your comments for answering the questions.
Can I ask the neighbor a quick question?
Sure.
Do you have any documentation of the bar exceeding the noise ordinance?
Who, us?
Yes, do you have any documentation?
No, I asked the police about that one time, and I said, "We could do it." And he said, "Well, that's, that's not going to work, but it, because it has to be a certified reader." And we had to go get a certified, he said it has to be certified by the state or somebody. He wouldn't take it from our phone, so we just.
So at this point, there's no real, you suspect they're exceeding the noise level, but you don't?
Well, the tents start vibrating across our table, we can't hear the TV, we can't talk to them, now we have to go out in the garage, I think it's over limit.
I don't know.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's what happens, you know?
Yeah.
Now, and this only happens when they, like you said, he has a permit, he puts, they have a tent out there, they put the band out there, and I'm not against the music and all that, but it just gets overly loud. And like I said, we've called over there, they turned it up, we've called the police, time the police get there, before the police get there, they turn it down. Then when the police leave, they crank it back up. So like I said before, we had two idiots, I put my music out there, and I went through five CDs one time and made it just as loud as they did. You know, it's like, this is stupid.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
So, one other question, you're, it says allowing outdoor entertainment, is that, are you referring to a live band?
Yeah, the Melvin Brothers, or Joe Char, whoever.
So, so you're looking for it for every day during the week, including Saturday and Sunday?
Well, yeah, but you don't usually have bands on Wednesdays. Usually it's a weekend thing, you know, people have other things going, if you're going to spend that kind of money, you have to have the people come.
So Friday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, basically? So if it was limited to that, and I wouldn't be opposed, and of course, you know, doing on Friday from noon until 10:00, or actually 5, 5 until 10:00, and on Saturday, probably noon to 10:00 p.m. And then on Sunday, starting at noon until 8:00 p.m.
Yeah, that's, that's, those are our hours, aren't you?
And the other, and the other caveat would be, sort of a live band, having it electronically distributed to the patio where you have direct volume control.
So not a live band, is that what you're saying?
It's hard to control a live band, noise, can't do it.
So do you have, every time you bring a band in, do you have to contact the liquor board and go through?
No, not inside.
If it's outside?
No, no, that's the township. The only time I have to go to the liquor is for my outside parties, my special party.
You don't have any documentation from the Police Department saying they were there, just?
No, they've, they've been there, they have been there.
You know they've been there.
Oh, I know they've been there.
And?
Uh, they were there, um, the first 17 months I was there, they were there 92 times.
We haven't been to the Police Department 92 times.
No, you've called.
No, we haven't.
Okay, okay, that's, I answered, the question, the question's been answered, sir.
We've called quite a few, but not 92.
Sir, stop, that's, thank you very much, I appreciate it, I get the general gist. Well, we.
So we're not, I guess the question for us is, we, we've had a public hearing, we've heard, we've heard the public input. My personal feeling is we need to gather a few more facts, I need to gather a few more facts, I don't know about the rest of the board, so we don't have to make.
No, we don't.
We don't have to make a movement tonight on this.
We do not, and I was thinking along the same lines as you, because I take everybody at face value, that what you're saying is accurate. We may have different points of view, but that's perfectly fine. But our job up here is, one of our jobs is to try to blend everything with our community. We're not going to make everybody happy, we know that already, that's not going to happen, well, let me finish. And with that being said, I think I'm with you, maybe we need a little bit more information and can bring it back next month.
So I would, I would motion that we table this request until next month to gather some facts and actually maybe ask the applicant to fine tune his request for us, because I think maybe Tim is looking for something that's maybe a little more fine tuned. I know you're, you're asking for outdoor entertainment, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week, but in your heart of hearts, you know that's not what you, what you truly want, so maybe, maybe bring something to the board that is more in line with what your, what your intents are. So it helps us make a better discuss, you know, decision on that. And also, again, I, I want to do a little more research on issues, okay, so.
On that, on that note, I'll contact the Police Department Administration and ask them to pull any records concerning On the Rocks and see what we have, okay, and then we'll distribute it.
That'd be awesome.
Would you do that and get it so Cindy can distribute it to us ahead of time?
Certainly, absolutely.
So that would be awesome, because that's kind of what I was thinking, so versus all of us showing up to the Police Department and asking questions. And then that means our public hearing would be September, not public hearing, excuse me, our next meeting is September 28th.
Is there any way that you do a sound study to kind of get neutral, you know, to keep us on an even keel?
I don't, you know what, that's something we can consider or think about, that's another option, I know the Police Department. No, I understand that, no, because I know the Police Department is, or somehow has access to a decibel reader, is what I'm going to call it, because it's been utilized near my house a few times, so I know that they have access to it and we could probably ask them that question also. Any other thoughts for information gathering before our next September 28th meeting?
No, the recommendation I had, you may, the applicant may want to explore that with remote volume control.
Right.
Bring forward at that point in time.
So do we have a motion in regards to?
Do you have a motion?
I'll second it. Everybody understand the motion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris will tune in.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb is absent. Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweitzer.
Yes.
So the motion is approved, so the request is tabled until next meeting, September 28th.
At 7:00 o'clock, okay? Everybody understand? Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry, which is kind of a heated subject, though.
That's fine, everybody's entitled to their opinions, have to respect the rules and we have to make an informed decision now. So thank you for showing up and we appreciate you doing so, to both sides. No problem. We're going to move on to our agenda item number seven, which is new business. Don't seem to have any new business. So, item number eight would be unfinished business. At the moment, we don't have any unfinished business. We sound a far less, I'm sure the building department is busy trying to get things taken care of and other things, so. Item number nine is planning consultants' reports, which I will defer to you, Karen. Sir, come up to the podium.
Um, we received a rezoning request from Crown Enterprises for a parcel on Stevens Road for a bridge approach. We got the application, we're going to have to review it. This is something that we're going to discuss at the October meeting, so we're just giving you a heads up that we're going to have to have a public hearing in October for this. Application, I don't know if Cindy gave you a copy yet, if you guys have seen it?
No, when I talked to Cindy today, the October meeting, rezoning, oh, maybe that's what she was referring to?
That's what she was referring to.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Yeah, that is what she's referring to.
For?
For rezoning, I think, from R12C3, it's a very unusual request.
It's on the island?
It's on the island.
Okay.
So just giving you a heads up to anticipate seeing that.
Okay.
And also, Steve has, or Gary's here, and he wants to talk to you about amending zoning ordinance to change some language for clarification, if you want to come up, Gary, and talk about that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, see you next month.
Hello, we've come across a situation in our straight line setback ordinance, 3.11, and we have been legally challenged when it refers to public thoroughfares. So there's, we have private and public thoroughfares, so we want to make a text amendment to include private thoroughfares. We have a number of private streets and we just want to put everyone on the same playing field on that. So it'd be simply adding 2311, private along with the public thoroughfare.
And then switching the language to, from MD EQ to Eagle?
I'm sorry?
And then switching the language on item D from MD EQ?
Yeah, at the very bottom there, yeah, the governing body, yeah.
On that, I just noticed that one near Eagle, it should be Environment, Great Lakes and Energy.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
And they'll be, they'll take offense to that.
We don't want them to be offended at this point.
We do not.
Not at all, so that, Karen, do you understand what we decide?
Right.
Okay.
I have a question, is there any downside to the private people that have that type of property?
I, I don't think so. I think it just means that everyone on the private roads, when we talk about straight line setbacks, even people on private roads have that same option to lengthen their views. And that's what straight line's all about, line everybody up.
This was brought to the attorney's attention because of the way it was, as it stands now?
No, we, we actually, over on Breckner Island, had a property over there, and that's a private road there.
Right.
And they questioned, because I said, "We got to be straight line setback for 3.11." And they got an attorney involved and said, "We don't think that we meet that because we're not a public thoroughfare." We took that to legal and legal agreed that, yeah, because it's not, it says public, that it's not public, it's private.
So my question was, Legals already saw this with the argument, not the argument, the topic that was brought up?
Yes, I, I asked for Legal's opinion when we received a letter from the complaint's attorney.
Sir?
Do you have that letter handy?
Not, no.
Can you distribute that to us?
Yeah, we can provide it.
And from our, our legal too?
The legal I had was a phone conversation with Christine on it, and she basically said, "I agree." So basically, we allowed for the permit without the 3.11 provision.
I, I don't think it's going to impact anything other than.
I don't think so.
Putting the verbiage in there, that's it.
So we need to have a public hearing on this?
Correct.
So we need to, I don't know, September 28th is our?
Absolutely.
Is that enough time?
I have spoken, I think Steve and Cindy believe maybe October.
Oh, the October, okay.
They mentioned October, I can, um...
Am I gonna double check?
I'll just double check and see exactly.
Okay, what Cindy just today was a brief conversation for a public hearing for maybe a solar amendment on the twenty-eighth?
Okay.
Or an ordinance, 'cause we don't really have one at this particular...
Or maybe it's the timeframe that's needed, to put that on the agenda?
That's what I was thinking, just because we're a public hearing.
Yeah, and then the, the October twenty-sixth was a public hearing for rezoning, which must be the island parcel.
That's for the Crown Enterprises property.
Accessory dwelling?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, she just handed that to me today for review, so that would also be October, I believe.
And then this on top?
No, I'll have to talk to her, I'll have to ta- I just got the rezoning, maybe it'll be September. I'm not quite sure, I'll have to double check and take a look and see what everything entails.
Okay.
But I think October's gonna be a very busy, um, meeting, and on top of that, I was talking to her about the rec plan, 'cause I've been working on her with that, and October would've been the time to have a public hearing for that, but...
We, we were talking maybe November, because we have...
November? Okay.
And I, it was, it's just talk, it's just talk today, because of...
I'll speak to her about that, 'cause we wanna wrap it up, too, but it looks like the agenda's getting pretty packed.
Because you have the September twenty-eighth meeting, October twenty-sixth meeting, and then the November ninth, because it's Thanksgiving, it's an early... There's always an option to do a, or a special meeting date, but maybe we need to do some more communicating. I know Steve's gone this week, so maybe when he gets back, we can communicate between what we have, we know we have at this point, and how to make it happen, if we have to, or not have to, but if we need to, do another date to accommodate these public hearings.
Yeah.
We can look at it, does that make sense to everybody? Everyone okay with that? We definitely know for sure this one's coming back, the one we just did for On the Rocks on the twenty-eighth. So, and the solar one is a brand-new one, I believe?
Um, and, and it's a public hearing, that I'll work out.
Right, no, no workshop. That was the old school, you can remember that, right? So, then, we need to make a motion to set this on for a public hearing?
Are you guys still making motions, but I believe Steve told me that it will just...
We don't have to do that anymore?
I don't believe you have to do that anymore.
Oh, I was gonna say, even if...
If you want to, you can, doesn't hurt to make one.
I was gonna say, even if we were going to do it, if we're not, if it's not for September, is kinda, we can make that in September for October.
Right, 'cause these public hearings are gonna...
For timeframe.
No, no, I meant for...
For this.
Yeah, for this one, okay, yeah, we can do that. All right, anything else from...
Nope.
How about the, who was a, at the last meeting, you were here at the last meeting, right? About... A special use, the person who is, wants to leave her, their house, but then build another one? Remember that discussion?
Um, I had talked to Steve about that, I believe, we had language in the ordinance.
We do?
I covered something similar, let me see if I can find it. I did not print it off.
Use variance, I think, is how they kept for, maybe phrasing it, temporary use variance?
I thought it was section three nineteen, temporary occupancy, uh, permit during construction. Do you want me to read it? Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
A temporary permit may be issued by the township zoning administrator for a commercial or residential building to be occupied for a period up to six months, while either a permanent building or related construction is being completed. Such temporary permit may be extended by the zoning administrator for like periods of time, but not after the original cause of need for the use shall cease to exist. The township zoning administrator shall require sufficient bond or cash, as set by Clay Township Board, which shall be returned in its entirety once the temporary use has been removed from the premises, in accordance with the provisions of the temporary permit. Such temporary permit may not be granted or extended beyond the maximum of two years, provided the building permit is also extended for the same time period. Temporary structure must be removed within sixty days after the expiration of the permit, or the bond will be used for its removal.
So, what does that leave us as far as, I think we have to define a temporary shelter, so if it's an existing house, and they're gonna build another home, can you designate the existing home as a temporary shelter?
Yeah, 'cause I think the intent of, of that ordinance was so that you could have a camper on the property while you're building your home. I mean, I think the ordinance is, looks good, but there has to be some sort of, because you'd basically be permitting to turn your existing home into a temporary home, so you'd have to get a permit for that.
I talked to Christine, our counsel, legal counsel, and explained, the one situation I know of, it's an old house, and they wanted to stay in the outway, they built a new house. And from her point, and I'm not trying to speak for her, speak for her, she's like, I would rather see that house taken down and give permission to stay in a trailer for the six months, 'cause that's easier to get rid of, versus a structure that's sitting there. It's more costly and more liability for the township. And again, I am just paraphrasing what she said, obviously, if you wanna speak with her, she would probably give you way better detail, but that's why...
I can understand that from, uh, from a legal's state point, but from a, uh, an actual fact, you know, from a homeowner's point, if I had a piece of property, and I could live in my current home while I build my future home, and, and be able to put a bond up, or whatever needed to be done, to guarantee that I removed the home I was in, that makes more sense than me tearing my home down, becoming homeless, and then putting a camper up and try to, try to make that happen. So, on paper, it probably looks good, but we know engineering looks good on paper a lot of times, but in execution, sometimes it just doesn't.
But that's where...
I was gonna say, with, if it's, if the bond is set by the township, then we, we could make a suggestion to the board to have a bond for a non-permanent structure, like a trailer, than one that has a, using a house in this method, that would cover a larger expense. So, if, if the bond for a trailer is a thousand dollars compared to a house that you need thirty grand to pull down, because a bond, a bond is essentially an insurance policy. So, you know, you might, you could get a thirty thousand dollar bond fairly inex- not, you know, chump change or anything, but fairly inexpensive possibly, to cover that, and have two different bond price levels, one for a temporary structure, and one for a permanent structure being used this way. So, if, if they're having the temporary structure there, the bond is X, and if it's a permanent structure, and maybe the one for a permanent structure has to be, you know, done specifically per that structure, but put an avenue in that route to have that done, instead of just saying, no, you can't do that.
Now, Karen, based on what he said, is that something you could put together with, uh, various options concerning that?
Um, I, I can look into that, um, I can, I can talk to Steve about it, we can come up with some language, um...
But again, it's a board that'll set the bond.
It's pretty, I feel the way it's written, it's fairly open where, I mean, if we can make a, a schedule, possibly have two options, or I don't know.
The reason I'm even asking this question, because it's been being kicked around for last year, and the person, the one particular person I know of has been told, no, you can't do that. So, I guess I would say, and he, he's been to the building department, so maybe we need to have a clarification between how you're interpreting it and the building department's interpreting, what we now have at this point in place with this three one-nine?
Yeah.
Because that's how it came to us.
Right, 'cause I imagine a, a, a house is not considered, is not considered...
And it's an old house, I know, I know where the location is now, and it is definitely an old house, but at this point, he's been told he can't do that, so...
And, and we can go as far as, as far as that is concerned, that old, the older structure can def- definitely have a, already pulled a permit for demolition, could be a part of that.
What do you think, Gary? I mean, I think you're aware of which we're talking.
Yeah, you know, we've, uh, we've had a few of these come up, and, uh, actually, uh, I came into it late, uh, but they had one successful on the Dyke, there was a mobile home that was in place. He wanted, uh, to build a, a permanent structure on the same lot, very tight, uh, and it went without a hitch, you know? You, you do, you set a bond, the, the bond is more of an, an attention getter, and without a doubt, I think it's consideration to what's it gonna cost to, to clean it, uh, but more so, they want that old structure off just as bad as we do. But, you know, that's something that, that I do put into the stipulations of the permit. Now, that could be challenged legally, I'm sure, but we do have an ordinance in our, uh, pocket, too, that kinda spells it out to a point. Um, I, on the hand, would rather see them with a house and wanna build a new house, uh, to have that scenario, than to take down an existing structure and put in a trailer. Um, you know, and I have been, uh, really discouraging that, oh, while I'm building, can I bring in a trailer? Uh, I've been discouraging that, where, where are you living now, kind of the situation? But I, I do, uh, I, I do think it's workable, I think it, it works well, and when they wanna upgrade themselves from, you know, an, an older home, or one that just doesn't fit their family, or a mobile home, uh, and they have room on the property to, to put in, uh, you know, a new structure, we're all for it. We just had one at the ZBA, uh, where they asked for a setback, uh, you know, reduction, and it, and it really, it just lined up with the rest of the neighborhood, but it's the same situation, they got a trailer, wants to build a house, the trailer's gonna have to go, you know, for a lot of different reasons, but, um, but that's a, that's gonna be a work in progress, too. And I, I think that this ordinance fares well, the way it's read, and maybe we don't need to, to nail it down so tightly, uh, and just have some general thoughts in it, depending upon what comes before. So, we're not sending it off to ZBA or, or wherever, that we can make those decisions administratively, uh, and with the help of that bond, get their attention, I think it, I think it takes care of itself.
Okay, so, I'm gonna take a guess, planners, building departments, and attorney, probably need to chat a little bit about this, and if we need to do something, great, if not, let us know, how's that, one way or the other? Anything else from planning?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen, I appreciate it. Item number ten is ZBA representative's report. Hey, thank you. Uh, we had two appeals, um, one of them was on North River Road, on the river, almost across from the state park. There's, uh, detached condos over there, and they've been built quite a while ago, and they have a fence, um, blocking the next-door neighbor's property off, it's been there for years and years, and it's dilapidated. So, um, they need a variance to put the fence back, and they are gonna step it down, uh, close to the road, there's a dumpster area and, for sight, so we approved that. The next one we had, um, was on Colony Drive, um, uh, the applicant bought some property, it's, uh, by the Second Bridge, and he bought it, um, because of the, um, land on the canal side was over a hundred feet. So, he really, really wanted that, so he bought that, uh, built a house there, and he came to ZBA for three appeals. Um, one of them, he wanted a little higher ceiling for a workshop, which we gave him. The second one, uh, excuse me, um, he wanted, um, a height variance, and he also wanted a third boat well. He had already gotten approval, excuse me, approval from Eagle, and the boat wells are already in. I said, oh, so, we said, well, um, because they were approved by the state, and we only can ordinance up to the, set up to the seawall. And so, we declined him, um, the third well.
Okay.
And there's no, we couldn't find practical difficulty to give it to him, even though it's there.
Well, three moats.
So, I guess what I was looking at is, you know, when I read that ordinance, it's just kinda arbitrary, too. And his representative was here, he's a developer, and I think he owned a lot of those lots, and, um, he's also a builder, and he says, there's plenty of boathouses over there that have three wells. I said, oh, but we couldn't find practical difficulty, so I'm not sure if that will end up in court or not. And I don't know if they can make him take it out, I don't think so, because it was approved by the state of Michigan, I was like, oh, this is confusing.
Yeah, this could be a tough one.
It is tough.
Uh, just so that you know, this past week, uh, the, uh, petitioner actually filed for, uh, a possible appeal of that decision. So, that might be one that goes to the court.
Sure.
Then we've gotta look at it from a standpoint that this is something that was approved by Eagle and Army Corps, and whether or not we can defend it might be a legal question, uh, as to whether or not... Now, you know, they made perfectly, uh, some solid points at that, that, you know, there's nothing that says, you know, that you can't have two boat wells, but they're wide, they're wide enough to carry two boats in it, or a boat in a jet ski, or something like that, so it doesn't get, you know, that precise, uh, when we talk about our ordinance. So, we'll have to see where that goes, last I talked to the developer, uh, they're weighing, uh, whether or not they're going to appeal it in the court system, or if he's just gonna make, uh, some adjustments, uh, to the wells, and, uh, cheat it off, and, when we get two, uh, two boat slips in there, but, um, that's, we don't know what the outcome of that is yet. They have three days to appeal, so...
I thought it was interesting, because the lot was so wide, you know, the front foot, and it made sense to my brain that, well, if we had two, if you had a small front foot, I could see why you'd only want two or one. But when this, he bought this lot, you know, so I kinda felt for him a little bit, but we couldn't find any practical difficulty for him, so we had to decline him.
I think the other issue was height.
Yeah.
I've had several questions concerning the decision at the board, uh, zoning board, and it's the height is one of the main issues, uh, being over fifteen feet. However, that's in, we also have an ordinance where you can actually have a living quarters of a boathouse, as long as it doesn't have, you know, restroom facilities, correct? So, I don't know how you can get, you got two overlapping ordinances, the way I see it, and if, and if they have a permit already for the extending of the height, um, you know, that's in violation of the ordinance, but they, the board approved it, so... That's another issue, uh, yet, uh, and problems yet to come, so...
Well, Colony's a unique street, it's very unique.
Oh, yeah, definitely, I mean, there's all kinds of boat wells, houses, they're, I mean, you know, they have their own ordinance over there, apparently, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, appreciate that. Item number eleven is board representative's report.
Uh, really don't have anything from the board, you can watch it on, uh, on video if you want to, there's a lot of, a lot of things in there, but I would like to thank the board for their expertise in handling this, uh, On the Rocks, uh, situation, as well as Karen and Dave, and, uh, Gary on the ordinance concerning the, uh, private, uh, funding a public or private thoroughfare, and, uh, looking forward to the, uh, some of the, uh, things that we ask you to do, Karen, as far as, uh, On the Rocks is concerned, and the, and the homes. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Item number twelve is chairperson's report, um, I, I would echo what Mark just said, thank you very much, both of you, for your help on all these matters, and Cindy also, who's not here. And we did, um, get caught up within reason on our site plan signatures between Robert and I, with Cindy's help, and whoever else was helping get that taken care of, thank you very much, appreciate that. Um, there's a few of us who have signed up for the St. Corr County Citizens Planner Program, so, um, we have that, that's coming up. so we have that, that's coming up. And other than that, I don't have much else to say, other than, hope everybody has a nice holiday weekend, how's that? So, item number 13 is planning commission member comments. You guys are very quiet now.
Where's Stevens Road on Harson's Island?
Stevens Road.
Is that where you're saying, was that Stevens Road for a bridge approach? Where's that at?
I'm sure.
I can give you the address.
Go ahead.
I just, I mean...
Oh, wait a minute, for the bridge approach?
Stevens.
Oh, it might be one of those, it's gonna be right by the Marina.
Is it down by?
Sunset, in that area.
Oh, it's over by Sunset?
Is that that creepy little road down there?
Which one is on the island?
There's a lot of creepy little roads, you know what I'm talking about.
Give it a more specific.
Yeah. I wanna say it's downriver from the now-present ferry landing.
It's 12225 Stevens.
I don't even find Stevens Road on a map, though.
I don't, I was gonna say, is it one of those on your heading?
12225.
Is it? But is it, is it one of those?
I can't see the cross streets.
I don't think there's.
I know, I don't see it.
Or what we're near is, you know...
I think you get off the ferry, you make your right at the stop sign, we know where Sunset is, correct?
Yeah.
From my understanding, from many years of this discussion of a bridge approach and landing...
Maybe it was never put in?
It's probably on the planted and...
They're talking about a bridge approach, like a bridge, not just a, like the big bridge?
The big bridge, I think, are we talking about the big bridge? We're talking about the big bridge.
Okay, I thought it was just like a bridge approach for like one of the canals down, Saddle Channel down by Schneider.
This is for the, the potential, the bridge to Harson's Island versus the ferry to Harson's Island.
Yeah, I gotta go look.
I wanna, I don't think there's... I don't think there's a road. I know there's a swath of woods.
Yeah.
And, but there's a lot of, if you look at the old time when people, whoever did this lane out of Harson's Island, there are so many roads that, just because of where I work, have been vacated that you never knew they were there.
Okay.
There's all, there's a lot of subdivisions.
In the water, too.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the waters.
Look at the plants, they're all across the bay.
They're all over the place, yes, they're all over the place.
The water level kinda killed a few dreams.
Our course system report hearing gets really, like, "Oh, my gosh, you guys are back again for another one of these," so...
All right, I was just curious, it was just a...
I'm just guessing, when she said that, I just was picturing what I had heard over the last how many years of where they're supposed to be going.
Yeah, I know, that's where the location was gonna be.
But I don't think there's a road there, no.
I remember Waterline, he's been coming over there, too, right there?
Um, I believe, I already even talked about...
Yeah, I thought it was right.
Yeah, is it down?
It's supposed to be right across.
Mary Jean's.
Yeah.
Line up, right?
I heard, there's something called that.
All right, sorry, sorry, I was wondering.
The other planning commission member comments?
I would say, I would have liked to have joined whoever's going. I'd be, I'd be in for that, but Wednesdays are just out for me.
No, I can, I can ask whoever's there if there's something like that, because I would, when my visa... I, I mean, I'm in Port Huron, so I don't have to...
Maybe some other communities coming in and watching.
Sure.
Been a couple different communities coming here and...
I think they extended the date, though, to September to sign up, I saw some email that came through, it's a September 3rd or 4th or something like that, so, but who knows, we'll reach out to them tomorrow and see if there's that possibility, but...
I was already stranded. Terrible.
I'm not riding with him, because I'm already in Port Huron, so whoever's gonna ride with him, what did you say, Chris?
I know, stay safe.
Are you riding with him?
That was the plan.
Very well, it's been four more.
He's taking the bus, I heard, and I don't know.
He is, he's taking, he's taking...
The 560, oh, no, it goes the other way.
He's taking the bus. Okay, number, item number 14 is public comments, and I think I see no one left in the public out there, audience, except for Gary and Karen, so resume no public comments, we're gonna move on to item number 15, which is adjournment.
Motion.
Was that a second?
Any support?
All in favor. I got another meeting to go to.
Okay, you got your motion, support, Debbie, Eddie, all in favor, I'll pose, thank you very much, everybody, have a nice holiday weekend on.